Good evening, welcome to the Milford Planning Board of Tuesday, September 2nd. Welcome to, welcome September. First thing is the minutes of the last meeting.
Make a motion to accept the meeting?
As amended.
As amended, yes.
Well, seconded.
Moved in second and any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm gonna abstain.
Four in favor, one abstention.
I think you got it.
Okay, we have a...
Yeah, come.
We're gonna have a public hearing, but we're...
Wait two minutes?
We're gonna wait, thing, let's go on.
It doesn't matter, we can do it, because they're withdrawing it anyways.
You can, yeah, you don't have to wait till 7:02 to withdraw it.
That's true.
Sure we do.
I'd go with that, too.
Okay, I hear a motion.
Well, it was a motion by the applicant to withdraw without prejudice.
They request that.
They made a request for that, I would make a motion that we allow them to withdraw without prejudice.
Second.
We moved in second and we allow them to draw the motion without prejudice? Any further discussion?
The thing is, Martha, you're all right to make a second even though you weren't part of the public hearing?
True.
Yes, yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
It's a whole different thing, yes. Good question, though, Chris.
Wanted to make sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous of five. Okay, we got no 81Ps. We got an amended site plan for 189, 193 East Main Street. Anybody here for?
Yes.
Right up there. This is a, uh, it's a waiver of site plan for ancillary use at an existing car wash.
It's not a waiver.
Well...
If that's what Larry wrote, I'm sorry, but that's not what it is. It's an amended site plan.
Mm-hmm.
I'm curious.
Amended site plan, go ahead, sir.
Good evening, the, we're not proposing to make any changes to the structure in any way. The end of our tunnel car wash was being used for detailing services a few years ago.
Pardon me, sir, I apologize, can I have your name and address?
Mark Morganelli.
Thank you.
Yep, we're the owners of Easy Way Car Wash.
Thank you.
So, we, um, we want to take the area that was being used for detailing services, which we no longer do, and we want to create a dog wash.
Oh.
So, folks can pull in and wheel their dog up the ramp and wash it dry, and we'd like to do that.
You're saying...
But we, we have the parking for it, what we want to do is put in one dog wash station initially. We have a waiting area already there, which was being used for the detailing services anyway.
I thought they were adding or moving parking spaces.
The current, good point, there are parking spaces there right now, which the, which employees use who are working in the tunnel.
Mm-hmm.
There's probably four of them there, they can be put elsewhere, we have other parking spaces around the property. So, we would have them move elsewhere to the other side of the office building there, and we would use that dedicated for the dog wash.
So...
That being said, do we have, it sounds like there are parking spaces mov, moving?
There's, yeah, if you look.
But I can't, I don't, I don't...
You don't have the site plan?
No site plan, that's what I was, that's what I was just gonna say, because it's...
Let me go grab the...
I have it.
It was our understanding that John Federico was gonna be here for the meeting. It was our understanding that John Federico was gonna be here for the meeting tonight.
We met with Gary and Helen, he invented a...
Created a site plan.
He created a site plan, he seemed to think everything would be amenable.
It may be, I, my, my question more was geared to, at the end of the day, I want to make sure that what the plan is, that we have, is, is gonna show what you're going to have once you do this, so that we have a plan on file, that's...
Mr. Chair, if I may, I'm confused, because it almost does sound like a waiver of site plan review, are they asking that we not conduct the review? Because that actually seems to be an appropriate request.
Not to move the parking spaces.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm...
That was why I...
The amendment to the site plan.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I'm saying it was an amendment, if, if they're not moving, if they didn't need to move anything or show anything differently, then it would just, change of use, could, could've just been a...
They did fill out a waiver application, but...
The waiver and the amended site plan are the same form.
Same, correct, I understand.
Which we should potentially, you might wanna fix.
I think that.
Not you personally, but the office.
You can help me understand, because I'm new to the game.
Oh.
What does that mean?
So, oh, so, there's a waiver of site plan review would mean that you're not making any changes to the site itself?
Okay.
Or the building, like, or the changes are so insignificant that it doesn't warrant our review?
Yeah.
Which I can't think of a good example of what that might be.
They wouldn't come back to us if that were the case, believe me, we wouldn't see them.
So, it, it would just, it would prevent you from having to pay for a site plan, basically.
Got it, got it.
And, an amended site plan is when you have a site plan that is, is changing in a, you know, relatively small way, which is the case here, and then, just a regular site plan review would be generally if you have a raw piece of land and you're developing it.
Thank, thank you.
So, the fact, the fact that you are putting in crosswalk and changing those parking for us becomes an amended site plan, so that way we have the updated information in here?
Which is a good point, so where the parking spots are right now, they're in front of Route 16.
Mm-hmm.
So, we would presume to use those same, what we want to do is put a little crosswalk where the tunnel traffic goes into the tunnel.
Yep.
We'd put a dedicated walkway over the sign up that says, "Dog Walk," you know, so...
Does one of those have to be handicap accessible?
That's the plan.
That's the plan?
I'm sorry, say again.
Handicap accessible?
The dog bays.
Yeah, the parking that's, the parking that's being used for the dog bays.
Parking for the dog bays, I would think that...
It should have, the...
I would think you should have...
There probably should be one that's handicapped accessible.
We have the room for that.
I believe it's one per 10 spaces per ADA compliance.
Yeah, yeah, and that, I think they're only talking about four spaces, it's just whether we put one there, I mean, I don't, I, I think there should be one there, I think that would be the, the thing to do.
Is John coming in, or?
John, no.
Okay.
Federico?
Oh, from Janey.
Yeah, he should, he should be able to fit, he should be able to fit the handicap space there.
Yeah, the...
Fool around with him a little bit and get it in, I think, shouldn't be an issue, I, I would put one there.
And that would not have to come back to us, we're saying?
I mean, we can just, no, we can, we can just do it as...
Let the staff confirm it?
Yeah.
Before granting it, before our signature?
Question for the applicant, how many dog wash stations will be on the inside?
We're gonna put in one initially.
Just one initially?
Room for two, wouldn't be more than two, but we're starting with one.
And the, the reason for that question is how to, you know, matching how many customers you expect to be able to utilize, if you said you were having 10 dog wash stations and you only had three spots?
We have a room...
I might take issue to that, so, yeah.
We have room for two dog wash stations.
Okay, so...
Bring in one initially.
One initially with the...
Yeah.
See how it starts off.
Two, yeah, okay, which would coordinate with the need for that, that one, and that's a spot out back there, just to make sure. I guess, and, I know, with the town planner, I went over what the parking requirements were for that area, and you're exceeding it right now, which is good.
Okay, good, thank you.
I was just curious, yeah, like, how many workers do you typically have, and where do the workers typically park in that?
There's usually two at a time in there, and they park in those spots right there.
Okay.
But we have Easy Way dedicated spots on the other side of the building and in front of the building.
Right.
Of the office building.
Yep, okay.
Which is 193.
193, exactly.
So, they may have to walk across the park a lot, but they'll have to tough it out.
Exactly, and that, yeah, and knowing that you, you are, have, in a sense, excess parking than what you're required, I wasn't even sure if you feel that you need those two out front, and if they're, you know, if you were to remove those two out front, as, as shown in the, in the proposal, you would still need the parking requirements for your site?
Yeah, we thank you for that, we thought we would use them just because it was close, you know?
Okay.
And we'd have the employees go park it out in the spot.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
And the reason, too, for that question is, would you expect customers to park there? Because obviously, it's a long walk from the front of the building along that pathway to your tunnel as the cars queue up.
I would not expect that, we would want to make room for them to park along Route 16, that's where we would have room for them.
Okay.
They drive, they drive through the tunnel.
I realize that, I'm saying if customers were to park in those two spots out front...
Oh, for the dog?
For the dog wash, just gotta make sure, that's why.
I, I got you. We could allocate those for employees.
So, that's what I'm saying, like...
We would allocate those for employees.
We just gotta be careful of those two spots that are out front, if someone were to park there, and then, they don't really, in a sense, have an egress way to go to the back of the building for the dog wash station. So, that's why I'm careful with approving it with those two spots out front, unless they were designated for employees.
We would make sure of that, make sure of it, sir.
So, a motion that specifies that those three spaces...
Three, correct?
No, that these...
He's, he's more concerned about these two.
Those two out front, those are being added on, those two out front.
I see, proposed, okay.
Just put two signs up for employees only.
Yeah, yeah.
Right now it says Easy Way, we'll change it to employees.
For that.
Okay.
And then, just, okay, you're gonna go through those, perfect.
Matt, you wanna go through your letter, or?
Sure. Just kinda read it.
Sure.
The applicant requests waiver of site plan approval for adding an ancillary use within existing car wash facility on the subject property. Specifically, the proposal is to add dog wash station and ancillary use to existing use. There are no proposed additions to the building, as change will be accomplished within the interior alterations only. However, they are proposing to restripe four parking spaces into three spaces, and add two spaces to the front of the building, and an additional space on the side of the building at 193 East Main. Additionally, they're adding a pedestrian crossing across the drive-through queue for the car wash with appropriate signage. Planning Department defers the public safety officials with regards to pedestrian crossing, we did get letters from the fire department, I'm okay with that. The applicant, the applicable zoning requirements appear to be met, as these are amendments to the existing site plan that are proposed, I recommend approval of the amendment of site plan subject to relevant agency comments.
Thank you. Okay, the water departments has reviewed the plan, there's no change in their infrastructure whatsoever. The fire department, the dumpster enclosure details are shown on the plan, and the existing dumpsters do not have an enclosure. If a permanent enclosure is planned, the Mass Comprehensive Fire Safety Code has requirements for dumpsters and containers with individual capacity of 1.5 cubic yards or more that shall not be stored in buildings or placed within 10 feet of a combustible walls openings or combustible roof, so...
So, help me with that one.
Do you, do you, do you have an existing dumpster?
We do, it's on the others, probably on the other side of the office building.
Right, but what they're saying, on your plan, it's, it's proposed to be enclosed, which it's supposed to be.
I, I didn't see that.
On the plan it isn't.
On the plan, they're not doing anything.
Oh, no, well, that's what it said here.
Oh, they are, well, they don't have to leave it there.
They just have the detail, so, my, isn't, isn't the 10 feet applicable whether it's enclosed or not? I know that's, it sounded like it was...
Yes, it should not be stored in buildings or placed within 10 feet of combustible walls, actually, he doesn't have a combustible...
Well, the overhang probably is.
Is that all metal overhang?
I don't think so, and that would above, if it's a brick building or block building, but...
It's a cement...
Yeah, the building itself is not combustible, but the overhang, I thought, was on...
It might, I can't say, I'm sorry, I don't remember what was described enough. There's metal roofing all over the tunnel, of course, of course, that's all held up with wood.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, I, I'm not sure that...
I have a question, what does enclosed mean?
Just a fence.
You gotta fence around it, it, it needs to be fenced in, so that you can't see the dumpster.
Oh.
Kind of gate to open...
It's a chain link fence enclosure with the...
Slats.
Slats, with the, the green slats that run through, yeah.
Yeah, or blockade fence of...
You could use a different type, most of the people use the, just because it's easier to put up the chain link, but, yeah, anything that blocks the view of the dumpster is effectively what, what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay, so you're asking that that be constructed...
It, it does actually show that here, the, the question becomes, how far out that dumpster has to be from the edge of that building in order to meet the 10-foot requirement? With a block building, if, if the whole building was block and there was nothing that could catch fire above it, you could put the dumpster where it shows here. The fact is that, what the chief was saying is that if there is any, anything that could catch fire, you have to push it away from the building some distance.
Where's the proposed dumpster?
Just not seeing it on my plan.
There isn't...
It's an existing dumpster, I believe, and they're just, they're just doing this...
Took me a second, too.
Is it?
The detail, there's...
Oh, so it's over on 90?
It's on that side.
There's none on, there's none on this lot.
On the 93, on 193.
It's on 193.
Sorry, got you, thank you.
Okay, I was, I was kinda, I was kinda confused myself.
Well, that was, that, in a certain sense, that leads me to my other, again, somewhat technical thing, is lot three and lot four are effectively, if you look at all the calculations here, are taken as one...
Right.
One development site, I, and I'm not saying that you have any plans on doing this or not, but I think, I, I would like to see a note on this that, that says that, you know, lot three and lot four can't be separated without, without coming back to us, just because, again, everything is, we're gonna, there's hardly any parking on here, if somebody wants to do something here, then they can't do it, and all this, so it's always been considered one, for a site plan approval, it's been considered one property.
Yeah.
It needs to stay that way unless somebody comes back to us and tells them what we're doing.
In other words, if you're gonna sell the property for some, to somebody else...
You couldn't, yeah, you couldn't...
Separate, you're gonna come back...
You couldn't sell one and not the other.
Not the other.
Without coming back ever.
Understood, yeah, we can put that in writing, I guess, I'll see what we have...
They can go as a note on this plan.
Exactly.
If that were to happen, they were to be separated, would we just remove a service to make that possible and put it back the way it is now, or?
Which is...
Well, if you're gonna, if you're gonna, yeah, if you're gonna remove it, what, there's a whole bunch of, of things that you went through that said this site meets the requirements of the town of Milford. If you separate them and you're no longer the owner of those, then effectively, you've got two separate sites, we'd need, we'd need one of these for each site, and you'd have to meet the, the parking requirement on this side would have to be enough for this...
Understood.
Parking in, in the setbacks, things like that.
Yeah, the site only complies with zoning as, with both lots combined, each lot individually does not.
Understood, understood, okay.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, it's more of a technicality that we've had, we have had instances where people...
The best thing to do with this, with the dumpster is call the fire chief, he'll come down, talk to you, go through it.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
He's just very good about getting to you, so...
So, how did that comment get in there, did the chief put it in already?
Well, the chief, he saw the drawings.
So, we, we send the drawings out to all of the different departments, and then they send us letters letting us know if there's...
Highway Department, they, no, satisfactory there, and we got nothing, there's no sewer changes or anything, so there's no problem with the sewer. What's the pleasure of the board?
A question, do we want to, there were a couple notes we contemplated, do you want to note on the plan, and so, I'm, I'm about to make a motion, but I don't want to overstep. Do you want a note on the plan that specifies that the two lots must remain, that the site plan applies to both lots, and each lot individually does not comply with zoning, or something to that effect?
Lot line is not to be removed in order to maintain zoning compliance.
Couldn't have done it better.
Works best, guys.
So, I recommend approval subject to adding that note to the plan, and there was one other, wasn't there?
The fire chief with the dumpster.
And...
And that, that we ensure that the dumpster is sufficient distance from the building as warranted by the fire chief, or as, as outlined by the fire chief.
And the inclusion of one handicap parking spot.
And the inclusion of one handicap parking spot, I shouldn't have been the one to make the motion.
The size for the two parking, employee parking.
Oh, and the employee parking must be labeled as such.
At the south end, yeah.
Did agree. Is that okay, Matt? I had a little vote for my friends.
Think so.
I'm done with the motion, I believe, unless you all want to correct me some more.
I think you captured it.
Very thorough, very good.
Yeah, Matt can, well, Matt, I mean, we don't need to see this again, we can, once, once those changes are made to the plan...
It's approved.
It's approved, we just need to submit that completed plan back to planning and engineering.
So, those notes get back to Gary and Helen, and what does he have to do at this point, or?
Yeah, G and H will have to put the notes on...
They'll have to go through.
Put the notes on the plan and show the...
They'll make some changes to the plan and send it to us, and then, it'll be approved.
Yeah, you don't have to come back.
Okay, so if we wanted to get started on this...
See how the vote goes.
Do we think?
Technically, as soon as they get us the plan.
Okay, so we need that.
Do I hear a second? I'll second that.
I wouldn't worry about it.
It's removed in second, and we approved the amended site plan with the changes.
Amended site plan.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous of five. Good evening, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Chairman, can I just review those conditions one more time, please? Add a note to the plan, the lot line is not to be removed in order to maintain zoning compliance, designate the two spaces for employee parking, one ADA compliance space, and that the dumpster enclosure is to adhere to the fire department recommendation.
Perfect. The, yeah, I think, the only thing I'm worried about, the way you worded the first one, maybe we want to indicate that site plan was approved, you know, based on lot three and four, no separate sale of, or removal of lot line shall be...
Permitted?
Permitted, or something like that.
Okay.
Because the removal of the lot line, that, that isn't my, my worry, what I'm worried about is the sale of, of one lot or the other.
Yeah.
Separately, which is possible the way it is right now.
But you know it's not gonna happen.
No, I, I, I'm not saying it's...
No, I know that.
It's, it's downstream from this.
It just covered...
No, but that's exactly what happened up at Hills Plaza, those are two separate, those are two separate...
I'm a Millfordian, we gotta do it.
No, and, but you never know, you know, what happens in the future, and we, we end up with it.
Born in his mother's bed in South Bow Street.
Yo.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pleasure, thank you so much.
Next, we have a zoning, ZBA referral for 40 Cape Road. We got two of them, this one's the first one for Marcelo.
Sir, so, these are both very similar, both of these involve the same property. Both are, one is for auto sales, and one is for auto repair. What's the plan, didn't make it into the package, what's going on?
There is. Did they give up on the campus?
No, 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 that's a different, this is across the street, this is the old Brazza.
Oh, the Brazza one, okay.
Yep.
Yes, okay.
I'll go through the first one, anyway. Special permit to establish used motor vehicle repair use on the subject property, such vehicle rated uses require special permit from the ZBA in the CC zoning district. Hold on, I'm reading the wrong one. Okay, specifically, the applicant, Marcelo Arujo, if I got that right, proposes...
Arugio.
Arugio, thank you, proposes the sale of used cars and new office space and 10 display spaces shown on the plan. To be in zoning compliance, the property needs 16 off-street spaces, which are provided per the submitted plan as follows. Automotive sales and service facilities, straight out of the bylaw, one space per 400 square foot of gross floor area, interior sales and office space, plus two spaces per service bay, plus one space per 5,000 square feet of external display, however, there should be a minimum of four spaces. So, the, the pre-existing office that's maintained, that's staying there, is four spaces for, per 1,000 square feet of gross floor area, that's still there, stays as is. Unit one, this is the one that's part of our first application, is 192 square feet of 400 square feet, so that's one space plus four service base spaces, that's two per bay. 1,690 square feet of 5,000, that's one space equals six spaces, that's for the auto sales. If you want to combine both of these, the separate app, the second application is for auto repair, that's unit two, is for one space for the square foot of the office, four service base spaces, that's two per bay, and five spaces total. Unit three, the pre-existing office, has the four spaces per 1,000 square feet of gross floor area, it's 1153, so they have five spaces. Total parking, six spaces per unit one, five for unit two, and five for unit three, is 16 spaces. They meet the absolute minimum required here.
Every square...
So, I recommend favorable report for the zoning board of appeals for both applications, subject that the applicant updates their company name as part of their application, because all they put on was their personal name, they didn't put their company name, and they provide an updated floor plan to us, and amended site plan will be required from the planning board. The first one is sales, the second one is repair. The bays are pretty deep, each bay can fit two, maybe even three vehicles, but they're only asking for two.
Any comments from the board?
If it fits, I guess, I mean...
They had a construction company there before, so...
Well, I, I can, I can guarantee you, we're gonna see cars lined up on 140, and there's no real view there, but that, that's, I guess, a problem to somebody else, but I just know that that's what's gonna be there sooner or later, because you're not gonna sell a damn car that doesn't show out in the street at all, I mean, somebody isn't gonna drive in to look at four cars. But there's no way we can control that.
What do you worry about, Joe? Like, having them up on the...
Well, for used car sales, there is no, there is no viewing of a used car at that lot, you can't see a used car that's parked there, as a matter of fact, most of them are behind, behind landscaping, and so...
That's what I mean, yeah.
I can tell you that sooner or later, the cars are gonna be sitting out on 140 for sale.
If they, they would have to take down some of that landscaping is what...
Yeah, or, or be parking them in the driveway or whatever, because we've seen anything and everything happen.
Yeah.
But again, that's, that's for an enforcement officer. So, I mean, for what's shown here, I make a, I make a motion, we send a favorable recommendation to ZBA for, for both.
You're doing both at once?
Yeah.
Second. Second, for both.
Moved in second, we send a favorable recommendation for both applicants. Any further discussion?
Can I make one suggestion? Including, or asking the ZBA to include in their decision that the, that the cars for sale have to be within the approved.
Site?
The approved display locations.
As indicated on the site plan.
As indicated on the site plan. If they include that in the special, in the, in the decision, then it has a little more weight than if it's just on the site plan.
That's fine with me.
Me too.
Matt, you had one other concern, just as far as the application.
Yeah, they need to update their company names as part of the application.
Well, that's for the site plan, right?
They need to update it with their special permit.
With the special permit.
Yeah, it's not really.
Not really. It affects us.
Well, we'll come for the site plan. Any further discussion? Any none? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of five?
Town plan update?
What's the pleasure of the board?
We skipped number four.
We did?
So.
Oh, excuse me.
So, I don't have any updates for this meeting, but I do, I do want to keep like an open dialogue here, at least on our agenda at some point, so we can discuss any ongoing projects, any concerns that the board has, properties, or anything that's going on. I took a handful of calls today about existing subdivisions. I didn't know anything about them. So even picking your brain on some of those things might be helpful, but just trying to get to learn the ropes. I did take a call from, what was the name of the street?
Field Pond.
No, it was a cul-de-sac.
Ariana.
Little one, Combs.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, where the fire department wanted to relocate a fire hydrant. Right? And fire, fire department's kind of the ones who determine where those things go. Now, I told him it was okay, and Larry said, you should come to the planning board with those things and move them forward. And I was like, okay. Why? But, that's a good question for you guys. So when he moved a fire hydrant as part of his subdivision, I told him to put it on ASBIL plan and reflect that when they do it. Is that something that this board would like to be discussing? Moving of fire hydrants or anything that revolve, involving our specialists and fire department?
Personally, as long as the fire department's okay with the revised location.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. I mean, technically, it should come here.
For what it takes somebody to come here, probably, just for consistency.
But then they've got to get the engineered drawing and all of that.
Well, they're going to have to do that anyways. They should do that, and that was part of what he said.
Not for proposed, just for.
Well, sooner or later, you're going to have to.
For ASBIL anyway.
Whatever, NASBIL.
You seriously want somebody in here for every time they're going to move?
How often does it happen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Let's be consistent.
I, I agree, we should be consistent, but I would say consistently, don't have them come here.
For something.
For something that minor.
If that's the case. Provided, again, the critical thing being the fire department approves the.
If that's the case, then there's a lot, then there's a lot of things that I need to come and ask you guys about, because.
Let's do it.
There are a lot. Yeah, I.
You know, if you're going to do that and have ASBIL drawings everywhere, and, you know, and just make these changes on the fly, I.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting that they should make things on the fly. I'm suggesting that I, that they call our office, and I make a judgment call sometimes, and how, and this differs depending on which board or commission I'm reporting to, because they have different. Yeah, for, they have different, yeah, perspectives, I guess. And so I try to make sure I'm not overloading you with things that aren't, that don't need to wait two weeks for me to come and ask you if they can move a fire hydrant. Right? That's something, I feel like I'm capable of discerning on my own. So I'm not saying they should be able to just move stuff without asking anybody. I just feel that there's things that, you know, even handicap parking spaces, ADA parking spaces. If they, if they want to move one from, on a site plan from what was approved, I don't, I mean, I can have them come back to you. It just seems unnecessary.
I completely understand where Joe is coming from, because you just used the word judgment, and that's the correct word to use. But one person's judgment could be different than another's, and, but, but nonetheless, I do think some changes really don't warrant preparation of an engineered drawing, waiting two weeks to come on an agenda for us to vote it in about 30 seconds.
I agree. So the fire hydrant being a public safety thing, I thought the fire officials were the person to talk about. When we're changing a sidewalk location, or something that's on the subdivision plan that needs an amendment, that should come here. Or something like a new curb cut, getting rid of granite curbs so that a driveway can go in, that's a big change. It's something that should come here, so.
Yeah, but Liz's judgment or Matt's judgment and Joe's judgment or Babe's judgment, you know, they might be different. And I think, is that the slippery slope you're kind of, you didn't use the phrase slippery slope, but I.
Right.
I think that's kind of what you mean, is what I consider minor, you might consider not so minor.
I've been a quality assurance for 45 years, so I've lived it, and it's whoever's making the judgment. I mean, if we had a.
Completely agree.
You know, if we had a procedure or a process that we can, you know, give you some guidance on what to do, then that would be fine, but I don't know if we have one.
We don't.
What was, just an ask, what was, what was the move of the fire hydrant, or what was requested, or what happened?
It was from the back of the cul-de-sac up to the front and one of the corners. It was still within the right-of-way, but it was, I don't know, it was more.
In a certain sense, you know, and chances are, we're not going to say no or not if the, but I'd like to know why. And so I don't mind that coming back to us, just for an explanation, so, not that there's going to be any, not that there's going to be a whole bunch more coming in Milford, because there isn't any, but, but just to know what, you know, what the parameters are that they're looking at, in my own right. If someone's moving a five-feet, you know, fire hydrant, I couldn't tell on the scale where it was to begin with. I could care less if they wanted to move it that way. But moving it from one side to the other, I'd at least like to have an explanation as to why that's where he wants to put it now.
I think I have a suggestion.
The reason, I'll take a rep. The reason they have, he probably moved it to the front of the thing, is what they do is they sit there, they pull up, pull the hose off there and run it out. Where if you're going to go the other way with a hose in the middle, then you got to break, go up and bring it back, and that's how they do it. The only problem, and I got no problem with them moving, but I still want to have the fire hydrant at the end of the cul-de-sac anyway, because the water department right now is putting hydrants at the back of the cul-de-sac, so they can flush the lines out, and they don't have any dead-end lines that aren't flushed out.
These are conversations that are easy for me to have between the fire department and the water department and, and my perspective that you're, you're going to log everything down if you try to.
And we're going to approve anything that the fire department or the water department want.
Yeah.
One, the water department's going to do it for, for health reasons, and the fire department's doing it for safety reasons.
Yeah, and if they're both in agreement, it's, we're basically rubber stamping, because we don't have a better judgment than either of those.
I'm not going to question them.
May I try something? Did you want to, Chris?
Nope, I want to see if yours matches mine. I wrote it down for us.
Okay, I didn't write it down, so I'm going to wing it. I'm, I'm thinking of something where, in the case of what we believe to be an extraordinarily minor change, that we allow them to come in marking up the previously approved site plan, and stip, and so say we see the new location, it's an X on the, on a copy of the actual plan that's already been approved. And if said relocation of the hydrant or whatever is voted by us, so I'm still having them come to us, but without doing a revised engineered drawing, but that that new location has to be reflected on the ASBIL. Does that make any sense?
I have more, I have more questions, so.
Well, I wasn't sure, and kind of to add on to that, would it, without putting more workload on you, every other, every meeting, have a quick engineer's report to go over these measures, right? Like, hey, for Combs Way, I, I approve the moving of a fire hydrant per the order of the fire department. So that way, we have an idea of what's going on.
Okay.
If we feel that there are situations where, oh, I think planning board should have been a part of that process, at least we can, we can let you know for the next one.
Well, exactly. That was going to say, at a minimum, at least, that gives me some, some idea of what you guys want.
Yeah, so an engineer's report.
Because, so, yeah, I'm perfectly fine with that. I would say have them submitted as a field change, which, you know, I've had them do, and I sign off on it, and I put it in the file, so that, but I don't, that's, it's easy enough for me to say, yes, this is a field change that I approve.
Yeah, I trust your judgment on those, and I think, you know, to Joe's point, it's more of making us aware of those changes, maybe just so we can have an understanding of some of the items that are coming to your desk, into the town planner's desk, that may not necessarily need our, made our approval, but we understand what's going on.
Because that'll also help me. My other question was going to be, when I'm reviewing, and not that we have a lot of subdivisions, but when we, when I do review site plans, when I do review a site that has been constructed, there, there are obviously changes that are made during construction, just because, and, you know, how, if, if I'm, if I'm reviewing a subdivision to make sure all the fire hydrants are within 10 feet of their initial design location, like, that's kind of crazy. So, that, that process of reporting back to you what field changes, and, you know, that way I can make adjustments to my judgment calls based on.
And to go back to Joe's thing of doing, Matt brought it up about the sidewalks. And when you wanted the sidewalks changed on Sanaya Circle.
Yeah, Field Pond, yeah.
You, thing.
Yeah.
You came before us, and we.
I was on the other side, and yes. I was at teenage.
Sidewalks or something, it's done. It's done that way.
I've just noticed that there's a lot of things that we build and fix in town, and there's little accountability, little oversight over when a project gets finished. So inspecting to the plan, I think it's a good idea. Inspect it to the jar and make sure that the work was done properly.
And for subdivisions, that absolutely happens, and I review them, I review them quite extensively, yes. But I don't, like I, like I was, if they put a fire hydrant on the other side of a driveway, it's not something that I even look at. But, you know, there's, yes, I, I look at those pretty detailed. As far as site plans are concerned, when the building department or zoning department, whichever way you want to call it, when they ask, when they, they receive a request for zoning compliance, sometimes they reach out to me, sometimes they don't. Sometimes it's probably too simple for them to bother reaching out to me. I know on, like Walgreens and the gas station are the two biggest ones that I can, on East Main Street. Those are the two biggest ones that I can recall recently, having gone out and inspected, and in fact, had them make changes on both before they issued the certificate of zoning compliance. So it is something that's happening. I don't know if it's happening as much as.
It should.
It should.
It should happen on every one, according to what we do. He's not supposed to issue a occupancy permit until he has an ASBIL that says it's built the way it was supposed to. Again, this has happened, I mean, this has been going on for 20-something years. We never can seem to get over the hump on, on this of people getting, you know, people come in and ask for occupancies, and, you know, we, we've tried to set up as much control as we can to make sure we got what was put on the plan, and we still seem like we're losing.
So is that not something, I don't know. I, there's, I know there's towns where they were, you have to go back to the.
Yeah.
Planning board. Is that not something you can?
Well, we could. It would be a change in wording, because I believe.
It does say something about an ASBIL.
Plan has to be submitted. It has to be certified.
The thing is, what the building code is, the building code official has the right to give the occupancy whenever he wants.
Yeah, but that's, that's different than the zoning compliance. They're two different things.
Occupancy is occupancy.
I understand, but the certificate of zoning compliance.
Yes, I understand there's a difference. I'm just saying.
Yeah, I know, I know it is, but you would hope that somebody has the.
And we do. I mean, because she, you, he calls you in to go look at the, at the site plan, so.
On some of them.
Some, yes.
They put, they put.
Okay.
Go ahead.
No, that's. I mean, we can, we can take a look at the wording and see if there's a way to differentiate that wording again, to see if we can make it a little more tighter, or however you want to find.
I just, if that's something you guys want, then, then that's something, I guess, I can, and I can talk to Brian about, to see if there's a wording that would, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure there are other towns that have it too, that, you know, if you take a look at the zoning, what their wording is in terms of that, there might be a better way of doing it than what we have in the bylaw right now. It may be something to spend some time with. I mean, we've had, to a certain extent, continuing issues with it, you know, with various sites.
Do we typically add conditions? To say that an ASBIL must be submitted prior to the close of permit? I mean, this is a bunch of standard conditions.
I believe that that's part of the wording that we have in here, that they're supposed to submit an ASBIL if my.
In the bylaw.
Yes, in the bylaw, it is there.
It shouldn't have to be stated. It's there. That's the only way they can do it. Whether that happens or not, and how can we make sure that it happens, in fact? I mean.
I know, at least three times.
Well, going, going back to the biggest killer of all, Walden Woods, I mean, we had somebody certify that it was, that it was correct to the plan, and they missed the sidewalk, the whole length of the, the whole length of the thing. You know, and none, none of us remembered it, none of us picked it up, and we ended up with no sidewalk, and them coming back and saying, oh, it was too expensive to put it in after the fact. And we had already certified, so they had already, there wasn't much we could do at the time.
So, so, so let me ask you this. ASBIL drawings, I mean, to me, in my world, there were always, you know, exceptions or deviations. How do those get back to the original drawings? Do they get updated?
As of, as of right now, there is no ASBIL require, there's no point in the process where somebody is saying, I need an ASBIL of your site.
Site plans do not require an ASBIL.
Site plans.
Subdivision.
Subdivisions, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, subdivisions require an ASBIL, and that's part of the process that I, that's entirely within your purview. It doesn't, so, it doesn't have anything to do with zoning, so that's why that, it happens, because it's part of subdivision rules and regulations. We don't accept, we won't accept a, a street unless they've given us an ASBIL plan that accurately reflects and, and doesn't deviate any, you know, significantly from the, the design plan. But for site plans, the, very, very rarely do ASBILs get completed, except for drainage. The drainage on a site typically does get.
We have, we have no, we can, we can try stuff. We have no mechanism to stop it, because we issue us, we approve a site plan, that means he can go get a building permit. After that, there's nothing that, there's, so, so we don't, we don't give him any, there's nothing for us to give him after we approve a site plan. The only thing that he needs at that point in time is an occupancy permit. We don't, we don't hold the keys to that, so we have no way of forcing somebody, I mean, the only thing that we could do, I think, that we may be able to do, is, is to require, require him to put up a bond for, for the site, for a survey of the site at the end of the thing, that we wouldn't release until he either submits that to us or not, so at least we're holding some money. I think we could do that. I'm positive, but I think we could.
We need bonding in the bylaw in order to request it. I know it's in the subdivision control regs.
Subdivision control, yeah.
It's not in the zoning bylaw.
So we may want, I mean, that's maybe where we have to go. I mean, that, that probably would be the thing to do, but that's all we're going to be able to do, is to try to hold up some level of money for them to do it, because we don't hold the keys once we, once we say the site plan is, is acceptable. It's not our thing. So maybe that's something that we want to look into, because we, we really should have ASBILs of all, of all the, you know, especially electronically. So as we move forward, it, it allows you the opportunity to, to use those for people that come in and want to make changes and stuff like that, and the owner is now changed, and, and all that stuff becomes difficult, and we're dealing with people that.
And we can put it into, honestly, into GIS.
Into GIS, yeah.
Is the, would be the end call.
Yeah. So I mean, that may be, that may be worthwhile.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to adjourn, unless anyone has anything else.
Second.
Moved in second, we adjourn. Any further discussion? Any none? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of five? Good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.